Good evening and welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting of August 16th, 2011. Good to see all of you again. And could we begin with roll call, please?
Council Agency Member Martner.
Present.
Council Agency Member Costa.
Present.
Council Agency Member Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair Lingal.
Here.
Mayor Chair John Lynn.
Here. And it seems that I'm the invocation, so let me change microphones. Dear God, Scoutmaster says, "Thank you for bringing us all back safe from the mountains, and thank you for the guidance that you gave us there and that you will give us here. Know that each of us, in our own way, endeavor to do our very best and to be in your image and be successful in helping our community. Please place your hand upon our shoulder and guide us. Take us away from those things in life which we would stray to and help us to go down the road that you would hold for us. Thank you for being with us here, and thank you for being with us each day. Amen." And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our city administrators' report, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, audience and viewers, the city administrator's status report includes status updates on three city projects: the Dick DeWes Community and Senior Center, the Lompoc Aquatics Center dehumidification project, and the installation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Ocean and R Street. Senior Civil Engineer Michael Luther is here tonight and available to give council presentation. I'd invite him to the podium at this time.
Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. Let's see, the first project here is the Dick DeWes Community Center. As we know on the last report, we are beyond the contract days as of last week. We are still in the middle of negotiating the contract days due to the contractor. No resolution has been made on that at this time. The payments to the contractor were about one-third through the contract. And they are currently working on roofing, they're hanging drywall, finishing inside plumbing, things like that, working onsite work. But it is progressing, like I said last time, a lot faster now that the trusses are in place. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Luther, I realize you're just the messenger, so it's just, you know, I drive by the place. I haven't been inside, I drive by. And we say that it's progressing a lot faster than it has been, but often I don't see hardly any activity going on. And I'm wondering if we can figure out what they're doing. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem like it's going very fast at all. And I realize that it took time for the trusses, but still, we need some activity in there because otherwise it's going to be, I remarked last year, or last meeting, that I thought it was going to be sometime next year, and at this point, I think it's going to be early next year before it's done, which concerns me a lot.
Yeah, well, there's not, I can't direct their work. I mean, they have a contract, and there's only sanctions possible if they don't complete in time, and it's on them. But I can't direct them on what to do and when to do it. It's just not allowed in contract code.
Okay, okay, and they do realize that there are sanctions, and we're going to be going after these, well, never mind, I know we don't want to talk about that right now. Okay, thank you.
Mike, you and I chatted the other day about the completion date spread could be from to, perhaps that would help people a little.
Yeah, so if you went by their letter requested 175 additional days, that would put the contract at January 31st.
Yeah, real quick, now, contract payments are, you said, a third, we're a third of the way through the contract payments?
Yes.
Is that in direct relation to the progress of the project?
Yes, every progress payment request that comes in, the contract administrator, or, excuse me, the CM, construction manager, and the architect, they go through the pay request and correlate it to the work that they feel is done. It is an estimate, it's not an exact number.
I think one of the things from working a lot of construction that probably impacts it too is, they're at the stage now where they're putting stuff in the walls and in the ceiling, and it doesn't look like any progress, but you can't cover it up until you put it in, so. Okay, next.
Okay, the aquatic center. Again, that contract also is beyond the contract days. As of this morning, I would say about 95% of the equipment and everything's installed. There's really not a whole lot of work right at the moment for the contractor to do onsite until, the key issues here are control sequencing for the equipment startup. They had some questions regarding how to wire the equipment into the existing pool equipment and the boiler, the new boilers, and so they have some questions into the design team, which they're currently working on a new wiring schematic for them, which hopefully should be issued tomorrow. And so, once they get the sequencing, there's, and all the questions are answered, they have approximately five to seven days' worth of wiring work to do on the site. And once the equipment's wired, they'll be able to schedule the startup. The reason they can't schedule the startup now is the equipment provider needs to know that everything is hooked up properly before he comes onsite. He's from back east, I believe it's Pennsylvania, so they require a three-week notice before they'll schedule their technicians to come out. So that is where that one is right at the moment.
Was there an issue with the original wiring diagram that was supplied was incorrect, or?
It's not incorrect, there's, it wasn't really, it's, the requirements for the contractor to provide equipment, we provided equipment, and it's, the question is regarding getting them all to coordinate together, which without knowing the exact equipment they're going to provide, you couldn't really provide a complete wiring diagram because there's alternates. Yeah, the architect believes he's provided all the information he needs, the contractor has just asked for some additional information.
Thank you.
Again, Mr. Luther, my comment would be the same as on the last one. I realize your answer will be the same as on the last one, but there's not much you can do because there's a contract. Just briefly, a little story, I'm having my home painted right now. It's a private contractor, two people painting it. They, through no fault of their own, the color of the paint was mixed wrong. Halfway through, we found out that the house was a two-tone instead of a one-tone. They're a day behind now. He at his own expense brings on a second person to catch up, or a third person to catch up at his own expense. That's how I would like to see contractors work, that, you know, they see delay, they find some way of catching up and getting it done, but, anyway, I realize you're the messenger, so, thank you.
Yeah, I would just comment that the, although it would be great if the dehumidifier was working at the time, it's, this is having zero impact on the use of the pool. So that's the good news on that one.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I need a little bit of clarification. We've gotten these reports, right? And we hear some hesitation here from council members that things are going slow, and the feedback, I guess, gets back to them, but really nothing happens because we're bound by a contract, and that contract has a certain completion date. We have to wait, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have to wait until the completion date so we can act on something?
No, through the mayor. Actually, that's not the issue. The issue is that was being addressed of not directing the contractor is, the means and methods of the work that's done and how it's done is up to the contractor, and we don't want to have the city take on a responsibility for saying, "No, do it this way," or "Do it in that fashion," because then we would have some potential liability for directing how the project was done. The project, the contractor, however, has a liquidated damages clause, that if the project is not completed on time, there's so much, there's liquidated damages for every day beyond that date. So that's really the leverage that municipalities have, public entities have, to make sure the job's done right, because the contractors are going to get paid less, it's going to come out of the contract price.
But basically boils down waiting until the completion date. So then we're going to start talking about liquidation of damages and so forth.
The liquidated damages won't be assessed until the project is complete, yes.
Until the project is complete, or until the completion date?
No, until, once the completion date is passed, then liquidated damages start being assessed, but the money doesn't actually get paid until the entire job is done.
Okay.
Because the, basically, the liquidated damages typically comes out of the money that we would have otherwise paid the contractor for the work.
Okay. So there is little that we can do at this time, besides wind, I guess. I mean, what?
The police chief won't let us use a gun, so.
I wasn't going to go that route, anyway, you know, that's a little obsolete in my book, but I'm just wondering, you know, it seems to be kind of a futile exercise that we're doing here, because it's really not going to lead us to anything until we have something to go after. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anything else?
I have one more project.
Absolutely.
The signal at R Street and Ocean Avenue. The, they've negotiated a scope of work and are currently, the contract documents, I think the, correct back here, but the report that was given, I think, has an error in it. The contracts are currently with the consultant for his signature, and once, when they come back to the city, they will be forwarded to the city administrator for execution of the contract for the design consultant.
What's the typical design time on something like that? On a fairly standard intersection?
I would say 90 days.
Yeah, thank you. Looks like that's it, thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to follow up from our last council meeting and provide an update related to the city gopher abatement efforts. The Parks Division is testing gopher treatment with the goal of gopher eradication through a trial use of a natural product that is earth, is marketed as being earth-friendly and fully biodegradable. This product has been applied to two park properties as a test, and park staff will monitor the success and report the performance of this product. Additionally, staff is following the State Assembly Bill 634 that authorizes the use of carbon monoxide for control of vertebrate pests such as gophers. This bill passed through the Senate Environmental Quality Commission and is currently on the Senate floor for a third reading. And when this bill is signed into legislation, it will allow us to purchase and use the verminator, which eradicates gophers through carbon monoxide. And, Mr. Mayor and Council, I am pleased to acknowledge several city staff that have been commended by Lompoc citizens for excellence in customer service. Utility Director Ron Stasi reports, he received a letter praising two utility employees, Office Staff Assistant for Teresa Luna, and Customer Service Representative Ishmael Carpio for excellent customer service they rendered in assisting a Lompoc business owner. On August 9th, Lompoc Library Director Molly Gerald and the Library Board of Trustees recognized the city facilities maintenance staff for outstanding customer service provided to the Lompoc Library. And recently, a citizen sent an email to the Lompoc Fire Department commending Fire Engineer Stephen Travers for his selfless actions to assist a citizen in need of medical assistance while he was off duty. These city employees are commended for excellence in customer service. Mr. Mayor and Council, on your council consent agenda is a memorandum of understanding between the employees represented by the Lompoc Police Officers Association and the City of Lompoc for the period of July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. And with council's action to approve tonight's consent calendar, this MOU will be approved and ratified, which includes union concessions consistent with the previously ratified firefighters' and Teamsters MOUs, as well as the compensation plan for the management confidential supervisory and unrepresented employees, all representative of good faith negotiations. And lastly, Chamber of Commerce CEO Ken Ostini is here tonight, and he will present council a status report on chamber activities during oral communications tonight. And that concludes my status updates and announcements. However, City Attorney Joe Panoni has a staff request for council consideration. I will defer to Mr. Panoni at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. The information I wanted to give you was regarding the lawsuit that California Development Association and the league filed against the state, basically, because of that legislation that the state had passed, which basically tries to throw out redevelopment. The Supreme Court, the good news is, the Supreme Court did issue a stay, which means that the law that was passed is, at the present, not effective. The unfortunate part of the stay is, because the Supreme Court was trying to keep all the parties at status quo, they, court also said that redevelopment agencies during the time that the stay is in effect, basically can't do any business. So the agency won't be able to incur any new debt, won't be able to enter into any new contracts, one way or another. Past contracts that were approved previously can still be implemented and paid for. Obligations that you have, like bonds or whatnot, can still be paid for. The Supreme Court has set an expedited briefing schedule with their goal being to have oral arguments sometime later this year, and having a decision from the Supreme Court in early January before the first extortion payment that the agencies are supposed to pay would be due, which would be January 15. We still believe that, and it's on your agenda, the, you should have your second reading of the ordinance that is, in essence, your decision to opt into the extortion payment to keep your agency alive if you want to. It may be irrelevant because the Supreme Court may decide that all that legislation was invalid anyway, so it won't hurt to adopt it. However, if they don't invalidate it, it would be good to have that ordinance in place just in case they say that their authority would be there, and then it's done, and you don't have to worry about adopting an ordinance. Again, one of the reasons, one of the unfortunate things, basically for Mr. Wilkie, is very unfortunate, one of the reasons that it was a good idea last time to adopt the ordinance was because then you wouldn't have had to prepare, or Brad wouldn't have had to prepare what's called the enforceable obligations list. But because of the way that the Supreme Court issued its stay, even if we adopt this ordinance, even if you adopt the ordinance, we're still going to have to do that enforceable obligations list, and we have to do that before August 28th, which means between now and August 28th, you're going to have to have a special meeting because you have to adopt that enforceable obligations list. So we'll make sure that that special meeting is arranged so that we at least have three members available at the time. And just for your further information, as you may recall, one of the things that the state was supposed to do, the Department of Finance, was to give each agency how much money their extortion payments were going to cost for each of the agencies, and the agents, your agency, has the right to appeal that decision, and in fact, an appeal has been filed, again, because of Mr. Wilkie and his staff. They filed an appeal because there's two bonds that the agency has issued that weren't taken into consideration as things that should reduce the payments that you're owed, the 2004 bonds and the 2010 bonds. So that process is now going through too, and we're not the only agency that's filed an appeal. In fact, they created a special email address so that they wouldn't get bogged down by a lot of paperwork. So that's where we are with the lawsuit, and we'll keep you up to date as things happen.
Is there an advantage or disadvantage with regard to the court action and our adopting this at this time?
There's no up or down to adopting it regarding the court action today. However, depending upon what the court may do, it'd be better to have it adopted just in case they don't invalidate the laws. If they do invalidate them, then it doesn't matter anyway.
Okay, and we had talked before about this, that you would not submit it until the last appropriate time.
Right.
And I assume that's still the same?
Correct.
Direction?
Correct.
And would I sign that and then give it to you, and you would hold it, or how would this proceed?
You would sign it, and the clerk wouldn't send it off until the last moment that we have to send it off.
And Ken, you're comfortable with that?
Definitely.
As a continued decision?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I want to go back to the staff report and regarding the gopher holes. I had a meeting with Ms. Barcelona that I would like her to share, the questions that I asked, and actually share with the public what her answer was. After last council meeting, we had somebody that complained regarding the event that was going on at Ryan Park, the dog show. And I talked to Ms. Barcelona and basically asked, well, what happened? And I would like Ms. Barcelona to tell me what she told me, so she can share it with the public and the council members.
Go ahead, Laurel.
Hi, I apologize, my memory is failing me as to, but I think what I clarified for you was that I was advised by Parks and Urban Forestry Division that they did go out just prior to the dog show and worked to cover the gopher holes, and there was a concerted effort to do that prior to the dog show. Thank you.
Let me chime in, that after I came back and heard about that, I contacted Pete, Pete, I apologize. DeSoto, yes, who is the chairman of the event, and I had a conversation with him last night. He called me back in the evening, and he felt that the gopher holes were a little bit less of an issue from their perspective. The unevenness of the turf seemed a little worse than the prior year in some of the areas that they had used, but they relocated the rings that had been in those areas that were, seemed to be more distressed to areas that seemed to be less distressed. And from their standpoint, yes, they'd appreciate some effort on it, but it was not, it was not a really big issue for them. And I am having a meeting with Mr. DeSoto and the Kennel Club President, I think it's next Tuesday, where we can sit down face to face and chat, but it didn't seem to be too big an issue with them at this time. Councilmember Lingal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd heard the similar thing, that it wasn't as great of an issue, however, rest assured that we are not going to take that as, okay, we don't have to do anything. We are going to get rid of these gophers. Yes?
Yeah, so all of you understand, we were, when was that? Anybody remember, March? And the city administrator was on the phone to buy the verminator. We were going to gas the little suckers. And the nice man at Verminator said, "Ah, you guys are a city, huh? Well, it's a felony to use this in California." Now, most people just use it, but maybe as a city, that might not be what you'd want to do. Is that kind of how it went? Pretty much. And so then we started following A B what's it? And I have personally visited and lobbied our folks when I was on a SB CAG day in Sacramento, and I have kept in touch with them, and I am happy to say that Senator Blakesley and his staff have been diligent in their pursuit of gopher eradication in Lompoc. And legal gopher eradication in Lompoc. And they enjoy the little story I sent them about, "You're a gopher, and you're going to die," and for those of you who want to hear that after, come by and see me. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Yes, Laurel, no? Okay. And now, oral communications, this is your opportunity to address the council on any subject. If you have one that's on the agenda and you can wait, that would be better. If you can't wait, you can talk about it now. So come on down. Aren't you skipping a school board meeting tonight?
It's already there. It's over.
Okay. We had you on the second oral communication at 10 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, I thought you might have that. Ken Ostini, Lompoc, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, thank you for giving this opportunity. Before I go into my little report, just talk about gophers for a second. As you get to the point with the gophers and you think you might be ready to buy a machine, I suggest maybe you talk to the superintendent of schools, because that's something we could also use, and maybe, I don't know, the cost of this piece of equipment, but maybe it's something we can share in and both use it, because we have the same problem all over our school campuses, so it might be a good deal to work together on that one. So, okay. I'm using my glasses here, excuse me. Report from the Chamber of Commerce, Old Town Market and Farmers Market's going really well, I think very, very successful. Once we got, the Farmers Market moved over to Cypress, I think that kind of helped things a little bit. I've seen many of you out there, so you know it's been, I think, very, very well-attended. We have two weeks left, this week International Night, and then School Night's the last night on 26 August. Would like to thank the city staff for their support, you know, the guys that bring the barricades out and are there at the very end, they move them out, have been great support for us, and Larry Bean and his folks and their support of the Farmers Market has been outstanding, and the Old Town Market, I think, has been a great success, and hopefully we'll never have a situation where we don't have that again, because I think it's a good thing to have, and we're going to make that a high priority every year. Okay, second, on April 12th, we hosted an Airman's Appreciation Barbecue on base. Our Military Affairs Committee served over 1,000 meals to Airmen on base and had raffles of a variety of different kinds of prizes for just anyone in the military to receive those. And that went very, very well. And that's supported by donations from out, from within the community, so a great event we do every year. Also, and you all may get copies, I think Laurel might be able to answer this, on the, we do a semi-annual contract report, I know she gets that, and I think the mayor, I think you get a copy of that, but hopefully if you do, that you share that with all the, all the council members, rather than me try to read all that information to you. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Western Association of Chamber Executives Academy. It's a three-year training course that I started with a class of 35 new chamber employees, some CEOs, some membership directors, some government affairs, just an abundance of knowledge I learned in that program. Again, that's a three-year program, I have a number of other courses I'll have to attend in between, and need 10 additional units to graduate from that program. So in three years, hopefully if I'm still around, I'll be graduating from that program. But it was very good and very worthwhile for me to attend that, and I look forward to the continuing education and the future academies every year in Sacramento. On the 25th of August, next Thursday, our chamber luncheon, we're going to be having a gentleman from SpaceX. a gentleman from SpaceX, Lee Rosen, will be our guest speaker. So if you would like to attend and be at that, please give us a call at the Chamber, and we'd love to have you there. I think it's going to be very, very, very interesting to hear what he has to say about what SpaceX is doing for us in the community. So with that said, that's all I have.
Any questions? Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Ms...
Sorry. I looked right.
Mr. Austin, on the news this evening, I was briefly watching, and the president of the California Chamber of Commerce was talking about a program that they have recently started in monitoring California bills that they deem as job killers. Are we going to participate in that at all? Are you familiar with the program?
A little bit. Many of the chambers, as I found out when I was up there, are much bigger staffs than we have, and they actually have government relations and policy people on staff full time. That's all they deal with. I mean, our staff is probably one of the smallest compared to... There were some upwards of 45 employees within their chamber. But yeah, that's something that we have to try and stay on top of, but it's an additional workload to do that. So and again, the Cal Chamber is good at getting that information out to all the local chambers. So yeah, we'll get that information.
Okay. Thank you.
On that subject, if you're interested in if the Cal Chamber report comes to me and then I read it and I pass it on to Beth, but I can put you on the reading list in between if you'd like to look at it. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your update. One of the things that I talked about when we were discussing the Chamber contract a few months ago was that I was looking for to see if the Chamber could come up with a strategic plan, a long-term strategic plan.
I interrupt you real quick.
Yes.
Thursday, we have a strategic planning meeting.
Okay. Well, my question was to that, where are we there? And could we, next time, get an update of, you know, what are your plans and priorities? What are you working on? You know, the daily activities and that kind of stuff, we do get them through Friday Focus and all of that kind of stuff. But the more of the Board of Directors' leadership, we necessarily might not be exposed to. So I would appreciate if we can get some feedback as to what are your long-term, meaning not you, but the Chamber of Commerce, long-term goals and strategic plan.
Yep. Believe me, I'm waiting to see that also.
Good.
And I'll be an active part of that on Thursday.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your report. I'm almost to that effect as well because I'm sure this will be a piece of it. I want to say thank you, first off, for having, again, during Old Town Market, there was a wine pouring event that I was also part of, and I believe upwards of $700 was raised. And those monies will go directly back into supporting and marketing the wine industry, which was really exciting. That was the second event. They were both very well attended. So I want to say thank you for having that organized and doing that for us. But I was curious, and I'm sure that this will be part of the strategic plan as well, what are the plans, you know, for these funds? I was just curious. You know, I only speak with you every now and again, and so if, as I said, I'm assuming that'll be included in the strategic plan. But just, I'd be curious to know what the update is on that side of when you're raising these funds, where they're going to be going.
Well, those actually go back into for the wine industry. There's a separate committee.
Correct.
That deals with that. So as far as the actual board goes, it's really not their decision, it's that committee's decision on how those money are spent to go right back into the wine industry to support that. So I think we're looking at more signs, actually.
That's what I'm, you know, I'm curious what exactly it's going to do. They've talked about a marquee in the ghetto. Just because I have, these are the main questions people ask me, you know, what's going on? What are going to be the newest updates? And so maybe, are there committee reports that I can get my hands on? Or is, can we get an update on those committees?
I can provide that. When next, when they make a decision, I can provide that update to you.
That would be perfect.
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, we have a person from the wine industry on our board now. Clinton Frohick is now a member of the Chamber Board, so...
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I'm Suzanne Schwark with the Lompoc District Libraries Foundation, representing our board. And I just wanted to talk about two events that we're actually having at the library. One is the Free Family Concerts on the library lawn. And we have, this summer, it is our fifth season, and we have a series of three. And the 21st, next Sunday, they are held on Sunday afternoons, will be our last concert. So we invite the public to attend those. They're our way of showing appreciation to the public for their support of the library. And they are sponsored by four local banks in town here. I also want to put my salesman hat on and say that we're having an event in September, September 17th, which is a cabaret in the library. And it is the Great American Songbook. It's a benefit performance, so we're fortunate to have the opportunity to have the Chamber's own Dennis Hedrick perform for us. He's talented both in the Lompoc and Santa Maria Civic Theater as an actor and as a playwright. And he comes highly acclaimed by Maggie Warsdale, who has a cabaret business and dinner theater in New Jersey. And she's come here and performed. And she recommends Dennis highly. So I want to let you know that that event is September 17th. It will be in the library. It's 6 o'clock, and of course, with dinner and entertainment. Tickets are available from foundation directors, but also from Union Bank, the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce, and the Lompoc and Village Libraries. So I thank you very much. If you have any questions on that, can you? Thank you very much.
Any questions? Yeah, she passed your flyer out, went down.
Oh, thank you.
Ashley's right on it.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for volunteering and helping. Ashley.
The reason I had those was because, I don't know if I've announced this to the public, I'm one of the newer board members of the District Libraries Foundation. So we got those and we're trying to promote it, so I just wanted to make sure the public knew that.
Are you selling tickets?
I don't have them, but I can tell you.
Do you take money and just deliver?
Yes, I can be the middleman if you would like me to. That's not a problem.
Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. First, I want to compliment you on thinking outside the box and trying something that was different. And I'm sorry that I wasn't at the council meeting when you did try it because I understand it was a total bust. And I, you know, I think if I had been here, I might have been able to clarify one thing. The cities that use this opportunity where the council has a little bit of a discussion and then you go to the public, the cities that use that don't give what they're thinking. They don't say, "Well, I support," or "I oppose" this. They use that opportunity in the beginning to say, "I have a concern about this," or "I have a question." You know, "These are my questions," which gives anyone in the audience an opportunity if they know about this issue to then address it during public communications. Then, when it comes back to the council, you make your decisions then. I mean, nobody wants to think you've made them before anybody speaks. So I think there was some confusion, and I compliment you on at least giving it a try. I'm not suggesting you try it again. I think that, you know, has left the dock. But it does work if it's done the way I just explained it. Anyhow, thank you. And on this gopher thing, you know, I just got back from Canada, and I spent quite a bit of time in different cities along the way. And I can tell you that everywhere, they're having a major problem with gophers, everywhere. If we all started gassing these little rodents, I don't know what would happen, but I don't think it would bode well for any of us. There's got to be other answers, but, you know, when I was in Vancouver, I was at a park. And if you think Ryan Park is, got a lot of gophers, why do you go to a park up in Vancouver? I mean, it was horrible. So it's something everybody's dealing with, and so I think when we deal with it, we should look at the best way to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Howerton, may I ask? Just out of curiosity, why do you think it'd be a bad idea to gas them?
Well, you know, just thought of everybody putting all the, everybody using gas to get rid of these gophers. You know, I'm not a scientist, but I would think from an environmental standpoint, it's got to do some serious damage to the ground and potential buildup. You know, and I don't know, but I just would hope that you'd study it more thoroughly before you would consider using it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think this is the time to talk about, you know, the gopher, you know, whether gassing is the right thing or not, since we don't know the details. Nevertheless, I do have to say that carbon monoxide is a highly poisonous gas, and there was also legislature just passed that we need to put carbon monoxide detectors in all our homes that detect parts per million, if not parts per billion, of this contaminant. And it is highly poisonous. So it's not something that can casually be talked about. Thank you.
And just for reference, the principal thing that this unit puts out is CO2, not carbon monoxide. Yes, the gopher expert of Lompoc.
I don't know about that.
I know. Got to introduce yourself.
Harlan Seakers, good evening. Back to this piece of equipment. It's no more than you driving down the street with your car. You're putting out the same gas out of your tailpipe that we expect to put into the gophers. Only thing is, we're going to push it to them with compressed air at 100 pounds. So I guess, Joyce, if we want to turn all the heaters off in Lompoc and all the gas stoves, we can do away with that and have a better environment. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak during oral communication this evening? Okeydoke. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that and come back to the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to take an item off the consent calendar? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I don't want to pull an item, but I do have two edits to the consent calendar, both on item one, approval of the minutes, both on the minutes of July 19th as well as the minutes of August 2nd. Councilmember Martner is not included under Councilmember's present, but I do believe she was here. I think those were my only catches. Those were my only edits. And with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Did you, did you list two?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't turn the tab. The 19th and August 2nd, correct? Is there anyone that needs to pull an item from this? Oh, seeing no lights come on, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion with regard to the items on the consent calendar? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And come back to the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to take an item off the consent calendar? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I don't want to pull an item, but I do have two edits to the consent calendar, both on item one, approval of the minutes, both on the minutes of July 19th as well as the minutes of August 2nd. Councilmember Martner is not included under Councilmember's present, but I do believe she was here. I think those were my only catches. Those were my only edits. And with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Did you, did you list two?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't turn the tab. The 19th and August 2nd, correct? Is there anyone that needs to pull an item from this? Oh, seeing no lights come on, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion with regard to the items on the consent calendar? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we'll come to item eight, Council Redevelopment Agency Requests and Announcements, the Status Report on the Landfill Green Wood Waste Recycling. And our Solid Waste Superintendent, Claudia.
Hi. Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, on May 18th, 2010, City Council approved Resolution 5630, Parentin, establishing the rates for collection and the fees for disposal of solid waste through July 1st to 2012. These new landfill fees introduce fees for hauling certain recycled materials, including green and wood waste, that were hauled in smaller vehicles, which include a car, a van, a pickup truck, single and double axle trailer. The new fees for the recycled material are approximately half the rate of the regular refuse. In the staff report, I use the pickup truck as an example because it's the most commonly used vehicle for hauling waste to the landfill. So beginning July 1st, 2010, a pickup truck hauling a load of refuse is charged $15 a load, where the same pickup truck hauling green and wood waste would be charged $8 per load. It should be noted that these fees for these smaller vehicles do not increase during the three-year period established by this resolution. I'm going to go through the staff report by using slides that show the tables in your report. Before we would begin, I'd like to correct a couple minor errors that I found. On this slide, the very bottom corner, in your staff report, it says 11%. If you could change that to 15%. And I apologize, that was a calculation error on my part. So I'll continue now, and then I'll fix the other one. The other one was me being a little dyslexic, so we'll talk about it when we get to it. Table one is a snapshot of the vehicles and tons hauled to the landfill in fiscal year 2010 compared to fiscal year 2011. There was an increase in the overall number of wood and green waste tons per vehicle, suggesting that customers are being more efficient by hauling fewer loads with more material per load. Table two demonstrates the past two years of green waste collected from the curbside collection program. As you can see, the tons from fiscal year 2010 to fiscal year 2011 increased by approximately 325 tons. The city has been providing weekly curbside green waste collection to its residential and commercial customers since the program began in 2001. Customers can request up to three green waste containers at no additional charge. Table three compares the green and wood waste hauled to the landfill with other recyclable material as well as regular refuse. As you can see from this chart, in addition to the wood and green waste, other recyclable items are down as well. Some of these items include the electronic waste and the cardboard. It's important to note here, too, that both those commodities, there's no charge at the landfill. So overall, the waste at the landfill is trending down. Refuse is also down 3%. And overall, primarily probably due to the economic times that we're in, the landfill has received approximately 27% less in overall tons in the last five years. There was a lot of concerns when we increased these fees for, concerns about illegal dumping. So I'd like to kind of address that at this time. We have, in our Solid Waste Division, a code enforcement officer that responds to calls for illegal dumping of any waste stream, including the green and wood waste. She states, and I, you know, we watch, and the Solid Waste Supervisor and Lead Man and the trash guys... and the trash guys, they, we all kind of haven't really noticed an increase. Now, that's not to say there isn't illegal dumping, and there's, and that's not to say there isn't illegal dumping of green waste, but we haven't noticed an increase in the past year. As with any waste, if piles of wood and green waste are discovered, the solid waste code enforcement officer works closely with the property managers and/or owners to try to abate the problem. If it's not possible, or the waste is in a public right of way, the solid waste staff immediately removes the waste as soon as we can to deter any further illegal dumping activities. One of the biggest concerns at that time brought to my attention was waste being dumped up Miguelito Canyon. Twice per month, I drive up Miguelito Canyon, clear to the top. I have several acquaintances and coworkers that live up Miguelito Canyon, and I've asked them to let me know if they see any illegal dumping activity and report it to me. And since the fee increase was imposed a year ago, we have removed one small pile of green waste that was laying alongside a mattress and a piece of carpet. Table four demonstrates that charging for the small vehicle loads and eliminating the price break of the first ton free for the double axle trailers actually resulted in a significant revenue increase. Charging for the small vehicle loads resulted in an increase of $67,804 in the last, in fiscal year 11. Eliminating the price break for the double axle trailers where the first ton was free resulted in an additional $16,148. So the total increase in revenue came to, comes to $83,973. Again, I'd like to remind you that the charge for wood and green is approximately half the charge for regular refuse and for the small vehicles, and that there is no increase proposed in the resolution for the three years. This is where I found the next little error that I made, and it's more dyslexic than it was. The first bullet, I say that the City Council approved the solid waste rate and fee increases on May 18th in order to repay the projected $907,000, $100,000 deficit. It was 970, so I kind of transpose those numbers, but after talking to Mr. Wilkie today, it came out to about 955. And as well as reestablished reserves at 10% of operating expense. The green and wood waste must be handled and ground before it's used as alternative daily cover at the landfill. The downside of this is that, as you will recall from your last council meeting, the replacement grinder was $394,000. The alternative is to compost this material offsite, and I contacted a local, I contacted both of the two local compost facilities in our area, one's in Santa Maria and one's in Buellton. The one in Santa Maria requires $15 per ton for the material ground and $30 to $32 for clean, unground material. Clean means no contamination such as the lead paint that could possibly be on the boards. If you take the 5,257 tons and you multiply that times $30 a ton, you get $157,000 that we were to be required to pay in tip fees. This doesn't include the additional cost to haul the material. The same composting facility said that they would be more than willing to help us haul it, but it would also cost an additional $10 to $13 a ton. The compost facility near Buellton is, at this time, primarily dealing with ag waste, and they have declined the material at this time. In conclusion, overall, the waste being hauled to the landfill is trending down, not just the wood and green waste. However, the revenue received as a result of charging for this material has increased. Solid waste customers are becoming more efficient, making fewer trips with larger loads, as well as making use of the curbside collection program. Illegal dumping is a significant problem, and it's one in almost all communities. The solid waste division believes that prompt attention to illegal dumping defers, deters further activity, increases public health and safety, and increases the quality of life for Long Polk. We are committed to quick abatement of illegal dumping activities. The primary goal of the rates and fees, of the approved rates and fees is to pay back the deficit and establish a reserve account. In order to maintain this goal, a decrease in the revenue due to a change in the fee structure will require an increase in other rates and fees elsewhere. It's staff recommendation at this time to maintain the fees for green and wood waste recycled material at the landfill as established by the Resolution Number 5630 Parentin set on May 18th of 2010. That concludes my presentation. And Larry Bean, the Public Works Director, Scotty Marshall, the landfill supervisor, Steve Clark, the solid waste program analyst, and myself are available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I have a lot. I know it'll never be like days of old with free dumping, and I, I know that we can't afford it, but my concern still goes back to the illegal dumping.
Yeah.
And then there, I want to talk about a perception, too. Here we are, we just paid $394,000 for a grinder. We need this material to cover our landfill, but we're charging our citizens to get the material that we run through their grinder to spread on the requirement we have to do. I personally think that maybe, as it says here in your staff report, that since total waste received is down 27%, that maybe our citizens would deserve it in Amnesty Day of dumping green waste or something up there. I think it could be very easily managed. I think the comparisons between what's brought in, I'm concerned with the illegal dumping because of the fact that it's wearing tear on city equipment, which is more expensive than having them drive their own equipment up there. We turn around, I know what happens in my neighborhood. The guy's gonna remove a tree, every green waste container in the alley's full, usually two would be, now we've got 10 of them full of green waste. There's three containers that one person has, when they could take a Toyota truck up there instead of having three containers and three lifts on it. I think that we maybe owe the citizens of Long Polk a compromise once a month, where they can do a bulk haul, lessen the load on you, the work on our equipment, and I don't think that it's gonna affect our overall percentages that much. One of the other questions that I really had on this, too, is what is our reserve account status now? How close are we to achieving what we, our goal was for the reserve accounts?
Okay. To answer the first question, we have discussed Amnesty Day and Free Dump Day quite a bit over the past year since we started doing the rate increases. Amnesty Days are a little bit scary because, if you can picture everyone in Long Polk going to the landfill free on one day, with your staffing levels and the amount of vehicles and, you know, the lines, and, so that can get a little, little tricky. The Santa Maria landfill, they do free dump tickets. The problem we have with that is, in the old days, if you, you know, you've been here a long time, if you will recall, prior to 2000, Long Polk residents got to use the landfill for free, and the county residents had to pay. And what that resulted in is it, people coming down and grabbing their buddy and their uncle and their cousin, and having them take them to the landfill so they didn't have to pay, and the county's diversion counts against the city. So that's why we changed the mentality to, you have to pay for trash and pay a lesser rate to recycle. I agree that you have to, you know, we're using the material and we're putting it on the pile, and we're getting a benefit from it, and that's why we're only charging half as much, because that material has to be processed before it's used. Title 27 of the California Code of Regulation states that in order to use ground green waste and wood waste material, 95% of that waste has to be processed to less than six inches. So it has to be processed before it can be used. So that's why we gave the break. As far as the reserves, when we set, we did the rate model back in, when we came before council in March and May, we estimated that the ending, the, the reserve amount, the revenue surplus, and help me out, Brad's here if I need, would be around $270,000, $280,000 at the end of fiscal year 2011. And it's my understanding from talking to Brad today, we're right on target. Do you have any comments you want to add on that?
The only one comment I'd like to make on that is, the rate study was through June 30th, 2013, and the 10% reserve that we're hoping to get to would be as of June 30th, 2013. The, the dollar amount that we just stated does not include cash that we have on hand to pay for previously approved capital items that just haven't been expended yet. So the amount that we have that is unencumbered fund is about $295,000, and the rate study estimated we would have about $290,000 by this time, by June 30th. And the numbers for June 30th right now are still preliminary because we have not finished closing the books, but that's a $5,000 difference since May of 2010, which is, I think, extraordinarily close considering. By June 30th, 2013, we expect to be at about $650,000 of unencumbered reserves, and that was the target we were aiming for, the 10% of operating reserves, of operating expenses. So we really are quite close to being right on target for the, the three-year cycle.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck, for your comments. That was one of my questions, was the status of the reserve, but the other side of the question was, when is the projected deficit payoff? So is that amount including the deficit payoff, or are we, are we attempting to establish the reserve before we go into the deficit payoffs quicker than projected?
As part of the rate recommendations that were done back in May of 2010, we looked at what the deficit was going to be at June 30th, 2010, last year, and a loan was made to the fund, from the insurance fund, to cover that deficit. So that loan is being paid off on an annual basis for seven years. So this year is the first year of seven that we're gonna be paying that loan off to repay the insurance fund to get the cash balance in the solid waste fund back to zero.
And that was included in the rate model? It was a four and a half percent interest over seven years.
And so, we had the increase, or we had the $92,000 to pay towards that, correct? Towards that annual payment, what was brought in, in revenues this year?
All.
Fiscal year 11?
Revenue would be, yes, that's including that.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, because obviously the payment's gonna be larger than that if it's only a seven-year amortization.
The annual payment's about $160,000 a year, roughly.
$164,000.
And that was inclu, that payment is included in the, the calculation for the rates, the budgeted amounts for this year, next year, and 2013 includes that repayment obligation.
Right, because the deficit is the entire landfill deficit, obviously, so it's multiple revenue.
The entire solid waste deficit.
Excuse me, solid waste, so multiple revenue sources, including this one, will be used to make that payment. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the comments that I would like to have you explore a little bit more is this Amnesty Day, or perhaps more than one Amnesty Day. I, I understand the issues of having a long, you know, having basically, you know, all of those streets, you know, with lots of cars and that kind of stuff, so perhaps it would have to be more than one day. But, but really what I want to be able to understand is, is really what is the additional cost for your operations to have a, an Amnesty Day? So we need to weigh, you know, we need to weigh, you know, the benefit of the Amnesty Day versus how much is it gonna cost the operations of the facility?
So.
And is there any possibility that you can give us a number on that quickly, or, or do we need to come back some other time?
I think we would, Larry could help me with, I believe we'd need to come back with that and do some, some research on that. I would like to state, though, that included in the rate model and the rate study and everything that we came to council, we have a free bulky item pickup per customer per year, at any time that they call and request it during the year, calendar year, and we also have citywide cleanup in June, where they can have five items picked up at their residence for free as well. That's included in their rates.
Well, I guess what was being referred here, too, was specifically green waste. Is that what your comment was, or?
I was just going with green wa, anything in general, basically, because it doesn't matter if we're gonna use our equipment to pick it up, it's the same green metal.
So you would like, basically what you're asking is you would like an addition, an additional amnesty, I, I don't know if you call it amnesty, but we do have a service already, once a year, citywide cleanup. Are you, are you talking about additional days to get added on to that?
Yes, but I'd really have just brought up something that I, I just think that we overwork our equipment out on the streets, because people would much rather carry it up and down the alley and put it in everybody else's garbage can than they would to pay the $15 fee to go to the dump. I, you know, I, and whether, do we make the $15 there, or do we wear out $30 worth of equipment at that point? You know, there's a balance that's gotta be there, and I think that some people, it would be a convenience and an incentive to probably clean up around their place if they could load up everything in their vehicle on Amnesty Day and go up. They won't pay $15, but they'll go for free one day.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize that your report indicates that the illegal dumping has increased, but even when we did have free green waste disposal, we did see illegal dumping as well.
Yeah, I cut, I'm, I'll be upfront, my husband works for the street department, and he, him and a coworker saw a guy illegally dumping green waste, a landscaper out behind Walmart, and he, they drove up and said, "What are you doing?" And he says, "I'm, uh, nothing." And they're like, "You know, that's free at the landfill?" And he goes, "I don't wanna drive all the way up there." So there, that was before, that was when it was free. So yeah, and, and that's what I wanted to stress is, I'm not saying there isn't illegal dumping, I'm just saying there isn't, we haven't really noticed an increase.
Yeah, I think people that are going to break the law or do illegal things, dumping they're not supposed to, they're gonna do it either way. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to at least looking at it again, but I think people that are gonna do that, they're gonna do it anyway. My question is, though, how do we compare to other cities? Santa Maria, Santa Barbara, County Santa Bar, County Santa Barbara? I think when we originally had this report a year ago, we, there was a city-by-city comparison, was it?
Are you, city comparison to how often, or how much, or how they charge, or?
Yeah, other cities are charged, other cities charge for the green waste.
I have some rates here from the city of Santa Maria, and they don't have a breakdown for green waste at this time. They're charged for a pickup truck, a trailer, a station wagon is $17.50, and we're at $15.
Whether it's green or not?
Yeah, they are, they are, we started our, again, I want, I'm kind of bragging, we started our program in 2001. They're just now kicking off their green waste program, and they are gonna be looking at a reduced rate for green waste material at their landfill. The transfer station down at, in Santa Barbara, they charge $10 for clean green and $18 for refuse. And is that, so that's, is that what you're asking, is the charges?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure that we understand that we're not doing something that is out of the ordinary. Other cities, the county does charge for it. I understand Councilmember Starbuck's comments that we, we need this, or we want this waste because we use it for cover, but it does, is a cost, a processing fee as well, so we are, we are in line with other communities in the surrounding area. Thank you.
It's my belief that we are, yeah.
And I happen to know that Santa Maria had to hire a contractor to do it for them. We're so much better than they are.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. And again, thank you very much for this report, and you may have done this already, because I know you talk a lot about best practices amongst other jurisdictions, but is there a possibility of going to the multi-jurisdictional solid waste task force meeting and discussing what, what they do? You know, I don't know if you want to call it a freebie or any kind of community assistance. You know, I know we do the one day a year, and I already think that that is great, but if, you know, like you said, this idea of tickets or an Amnesty Day, whatever it is, if we can bring that up, I don't know if you have already.
Maybe not at the multi-jurisdictional level, because that's like your level, but we meet once, once every other month for the, it's called our local task force, and actually, next week we're meeting, and I'll request, and we meet with all the superintendent, public works director level, and, and staff, and so I will bring that up at that meeting at that time and request them to, and, or Steve, that's what he does, he can email, we have contact information with all the cities, and he can email their staff and find out what they do for a free dump day, kinda thing.
Great, I think that's a perfect place to start. And additionally, I, I know that a lot of city departments are having the same issue, but a lot of it is just, the folks don't know that there is one free dumping a year, or one free pickup, excuse me, of a bulk item a year.
Yeah, we, we work really hard, you know, I'm really, I'm, again, I get to brag when I get up here, but we have our Trash Talk newsletter that says all the programs that we have, and, you know, and what we try to do, and we mail it out biannually to every, you know, 13,000 copies, so.
Great, well, thank you for that, and, you know, that's something, at that point, if we need to decide whether it's a marketing issue or whether it's an actual additional program, because I would like to point out, Councilmember Starbuck, that, you know, part of your argument was that because we're using this for cover, you know, maybe we can give them a break, but then it was, okay, well, maybe they can bring anything in. So, you know, maybe do we want to do a break just on the, on the green waste? So, you know, maybe, do we want to do a break just on the, on the green waste, you know, recycling, green wood waste, excuse me, recycling, or is it everything? And, you know, we can make that determination as well when we hear some more information about what other jurisdictions do. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you, you're doing a great job, I think, you really are. You know, I think we're actually being quite innovative out there, and I do remember the studies that we did when we discussed this a year ago, when we compared to other cities. And I think we're doing a fantastic job, so, thank you.
And Scotty's here as well, and it's his lamp, I mean, we eat, sleep, and drink this place, and-
That's right.
And Scotty's here, so I just want to, you know, that's a big part of him being-
It's a weird place to be eating and drinking, you know, I mean, sorry to tell you, but-
You really do, you just can't get it out of your pores.
Again, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for not asking for a rate increase.
No, no, no.
I just have a couple of questions. What would, what would you say the, the cost savings is of having that drop in vehicle traffic coming through? What, how does that help us?
I'm not sure I understand the question, I'm sorry.
You have a, the number of pickup trucks going in diminished by 32%. What would, what would our cost savings be as a result of not having to deal with 32% of the trucks?
I don't see a large cost savings, and I'll tell you why, because I think they're bringing in the same amount of material, they're just making less trips. You still have to have someone in the scale all day, every day. We're open 350 days, 55 days a year, and the scale attendant still has to be there, so you can't cut there. But if you've been to the landfill lately, you see the wooden green waste pile, really hasn't gone down. We still have to take care of the equipment, we still are required to bury the trash every day, you know, we have to palletize and shrink wrap the e-waste. So, I just think they're being more efficient in what they're bringing to the landfill, more in, more waste and less trips.
Okay. The one comment I have heard particularly from businesses with dumpsters that aren't locked up, is that they seem to find on Monday, they have a lot of green waste in their dumpsters. Does it adversely impact us to be bringing that green waste in in our trash stream, or is it not really a big deal?
We notice it, you know, we, when it's in the trash truck, we don't have the ability to sort it. And we do, you know, Scotty, we talk about it a lot, we notice it. I, I think if the state ever, and it's coming, if they ever demand that we go to 75%, there is an assembly block out there right now, saying 20, 75% by 2020, then I, I think we'll be sorting all the trash to try to get the CND material, the wood and the green, because I believe that's the only way we're going to achieve that extra 5%. So, at this time, yeah, we see it, not as much when it's mixed with the trash, if it's in a trash can, but just to let you know, we, the collection division does provide locks and cables for all of our containers, and a lot of the businesses, especially the ones that don't want people digging through their trash, we have the locks, and they just unlock it the night before, that morning for us, and then they lock it back after we leave, it's a, it's a city generic lock.
Okay. I've noticed that urban forestry dumps a lot of their chips in various other places. When they bring a truckload of chips to the dump, are they charged for that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's their motivation to go somewhere else?
That, and their green is clean, and what I mean by that is, when they chip a tree, they've got good, and that, I wasn't, I was out of town at the last meeting, so I apologize for missing that, but I did watch it, and one of the comments about that was the grinding up the tree, and they deliver it to you, or you can pick it up at a certain address. They're grinding up a tree, and that's clean wood or green waste material. What we get is people with their diseased trees, and we get painted wood fences that have been up for years, and it could have lead paint in it, we, you know, so that we have contaminated wood. So, that's why we use it for cover, and we don't give it away to the public.
From my standpoint, I think there are, there are still a couple of things that, and I talked to Larry about this the other day, that I would like to see us look at. Number one would be the true cost savings of switching to alternate week, green waste, and recycle, understanding that a certain number of additional containers would have to go out, and that would be a front-end cost of doing that. I was unsatisfied with the number that was in the report a year ago, because I thought it was gun-decked, and I would appreciate it if you guys could take a little look at that. I'm not asking you to spend 1,000 hours at it, but, you know, you know how many trips you make, you know how many trucks you have, see where we would be with that. And I'm still concerned about vehicles we get in there that are in a lighter weight category, that pay a flat fee rather than paying by the tear weight. What the county has done over the years is you have a, the first time you go to the landfill, you go in and they weigh you, and then you come back around when you're empty, and they put a tear sticker on the truck, and then from then on, they do that. And yeah, I know it's not perfectly accurate, and I guess the county went to a different system, and it hasn't worked very well, so maybe simple is better. But particularly in the case of like, construction waste, I think we're, we're probably weigh light on some of those, and you can bring a ton and a half, or two ton in on a nicely-built trailer and pay whatever it is, $15, anyway. Or you can bring a ton and a half, or two ton in on your flatbed tow truck, and you can pay $120. And so, somebody's getting subsidized, and having brought it in both ways, I felt kind of guilty when it was being subsidized. So, I'd kind of be interested in seeing if we could work something in that direction.
Um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No.
Those are just the two things that have, that are running around the back of my mind.
As far as alternate weeks, yeah, we will, we can study the cost of the truck in person, that kind of thing, but I did, we did call, Steve did call around to a lot of communities and find out what they're doing. Carp, Carpandaria does single-family every other week, and multifamily weekly. Santa Barbara does green waste weekly, and recyclables weekly, Galleta weekly, Santa Maria every other week. The South Coast, which is interesting, is weekly, while the North Coast is, North County is every other week. That was kind of odd. And a lot of them do the green waste weekly, and then they do the recycles every other week, which I thought was interesting, but that's because, I think, the concern of the green waste sitting in the cans for two weeks. And as you'll recall from those meetings we had, our concern was, we are a government agency, we do respond, when someone calls us and said they, we missed, you missed me, we put them on a list, and we're there that day or the next morning. We don't argue. And so, if, if there's rotted green waste in a can for two weeks, and they call and say, "You missed me," we could be going back a lot. So, that was one of the concerns. Regarding the vehicles being weighed at the landfill, both the transfer station and Santa Maria do have brakes, like you were suggesting, after so much, like 1,000 pounds, 2,000 pounds, but they have two and three scales. We are in the process, and you approved the money to move our scale next summer, and at that time, we're evaluating if the existing scale that we have is going to be salvageable so we can use it for an out. And so, I would kind of request, at that time, we could look at that, if that works for you.
Sure.
Okay.
Not a problem. Okeydoke, that's all I have. Councilmember Lingle?
Ms. Stein, several times during your report, and during the conversation, you mentioned Steve and Scotty, and I think they seemed like they'd do a good job. Would you mind inviting them up here to introduce themselves?
Yeah, come on now. I'm the queen of trash, and this is the king and the prince of trash. This is Steve Clark, he's our solid waste program analyst, and Steve's been with us about five-
Six years?
Six years now. And then Scotty Marshall is the landfill supervisor. Scotty started in the street department back in '02, no, that's 1902, no, I'm just kidding. Scotty has been with the city about 30 years?
Thirty years.
Yeah, so, we are very dedicated to the solid waste division, as you all know. We love trash.
I wanted to bring you up because we, we've mentioned several times, we think you do a great job, and I know that Ms. Stein could not do without you, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to talk about trash? Come on down.
Mayor of City Council, Joyce Howerton-Lompoc, I just want to encourage you to maintain the fees for green and wood waste. I work on green waste issues around the central coast, and I can tell you that Lompoc is really outstanding, and people oftentimes refer to Lompoc and Ms. Stein and, and all the people that work there, they are just, they're doing an incredible job. I actually, and I may say more about my friends, but when people come to visit, I oftentimes take them up to the landfill, because it's just so impressive, and when the deer are there, I mean, it's, it's just unbelievable. And people are very impressed by the work that gets done, and I think we need to maintain this level of excellence, because I think it bodes well, not only for all of us, but for our community. And Councilmember Starbuck, if the only thing that would get somebody to clean up their yard is a $15 fee waiver, we've got more problems than we know. So, I just want to say that I think we need to maintain this, because it's really, they've really done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on that? I think the deer are cool, too, by the way. Councilmember Costner?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So, one last quick thing. My assumption is that we will review this again next year to decide if these fees will continue. And, you know, in response to Councilmember Starbuck's comments, some of my concern as well was the illegal dumping, so if you could just add a table with the data on illegal dumping numbers, or even complaints possibly as well with this data, that would be helpful, actually, to collect, not only for green wood waste, but all waste, just because even if it's not usable now, it's always good to collect data, have it, so we have comparisons year to year from here on out.
Can I just make sure I understand?
Sure.
You want a compilation of- I'm sorry, you want a compilation of all the illegal?
Well, I know that right, right now, we're talking about green wood waste, so specifically in, for next year's review of the green wood waste recycling fees, I would like to see, you know, the hard numbers, you can say, there was a decrease, there was an increase, we stayed consistent. Of course, I trust your staff and the words that we've gotten, that there has been no notable increase, but I would just like to have the data there, numbers I can reference when people ask me, really is what it comes down to. You know, and I would suggest that, I mean, I'm sure that this is on record, but I would suggest that we get those numbers whenever we're talking about fees, you know, because that, again, is a concern that a lot of citizens discuss with me as well, which is, you know, you increase these fees, and these things are going to increase, the illegal dumping will increase. So, just going to have your whereabouts with that, but green wood waste specifically. Secondly, I just want to make a quick note that I think that this is a great example for the rate study effectiveness and accuracy. I think that, you know, that really just goes to show us that study, these studies, especially done within the city, multiple departments, this department specifically, is really, our ability to show citizens that, we understand that nobody likes fee increases, but that decision is a fiscally responsible one, and this is why, and that rate study really shows how we can reach that. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I really wanted to thank the department, Management Services Director, and the city for, for really doing these rate studies, and I would suggest that we continue doing these whenever we're talking about rate increases, and I'm sure council would, would agree, I just wanted to make sure to point that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the, if the council is ready, I'm ready to make a motion to receive and file this report. I moved that we receive and file this report as it was established by Resolution 5630.
And second?
I would like to make the motion, just with the amendment, that staff record suggestions and additions by council, because we, I know we requested a lot this evening, just want to make sure that that was included in the motion.
The suggestions that would be next year, it really is not related to this report specifically that we are receiving and filing right now.
So, how would we-
We're not going to add suggestions to this existing report. My understanding is the suggestions that the council has made would be for a future.
So, then would I, would it need to be a formal action to ask staff to return with those, like, you know, the, the more discussion of, you know, the amnesty day, et cetera?
I don't mean to speak for your staff, but I'm sure they heard what you asked for, and I'm sure they're ready to give you the, the information that you asked for.
Okay, it's just usually included in our motion, so I figured to make it official, but if we don't need to, then we'll receive and file, and we'll second the motion as is.
Okeydoke. Moving seconded, is there any additional discussion? And I think you guys understand what we were talking about. Yep, no questions, life is good. Okay, seeing no one like, no one's light lit, please vote. That passes 5-0, and we'll move on to number nine, unfinished business, a contract amendment, presented by Beth.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On July 19th, you adopted a resolution of intention to implement a second tier for the International Association of Firefighters Retirement Contract, creating a, the second tier of three at 55 formula. And part of that process is to adopt this ordinance, number 1571, parenthetic 11, and I'm asking that you adopt this ordinance to amend that contract to create the second tier of three at 55.
And this is an ongoing function of part of the agreement, so this is the, the detail of it.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Costner?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Just a technical question, why was this not included in the original ordinance?
There's a time requirement in, in doing the resolution first, and then you have to wait 20 days at least before you can adopt the ordinance.
And this only needs to be done with the-
The others will be along.
With the Fire, Firefighters Union, or will, or will we be receiving the other?
We will have to do it for all of them.
Okay.
And we can't begin the other ones until we've completed this one, as part of a procedural matter for Calpers.
Great, thank you.
Is, is there any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you. And is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue at this time? Seeing no one rise, thank you. And bringing it back to council, are there any last questions before we accept a motion on this? Seeing no one, whoop, you're, yeah, here. And Councilwoman Martin, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion that the council reads and adopt the ordinance number 1571, parentheses 11.
And a second, please.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, is there any last discussion on this one? Seeing no lights lit, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now, moving on to new business, the award of project FY09S8, the Bicycle Transportation Account Striping Signage and Signal Detection Program. Come on down, Craig.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Craig Dearling with the City Engineering Division, and this project is project number FY09S8, as Mary Lynn just read. It is for the purpose of constructing traffic striping, signage, and signal detection improvements to the city's bicycle routes, included in the city's general plan. The city received a competitive state bicycle transportation account grant specifically to implement this project, and the grant covers 90% of the project costs. The other 10% are budgeted to be covered by Transportation Development Act, Article 3 Bicycle and Pedestrian Funds. As, as introduced, the purpose of the project is to improve safety and convenience for bicycle, bicycle commuters, and the program defines a bicycle commuter as someone making a trip by bicycle for transportation, not for recreation. The project will provide striped bicycle lanes, consistent with the general plan, on a number of streets that don't have that striping. It will also provide bicycle route signage, consistent with the new striping, and also to provide consistency throughout the city. And it will also improve traffic signal loop infrastructure so that bicycles are better detected at the intersections along city bike routes. If awarded now, the project should- If awarded now, the project should begin construction in late September of this year and finish in November of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tell me, tell me how a signal loop works for a bicycle. I'm dying to hear that one.
Well, for largely the same way it works for a vehicle, the loops in metal wires in the ground, when metal objects pull over them, it disturbs the?
Field.
Yeah, the, the field.
But it'll see something that small.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
If you're parked in the right place. So part of what we're doing for this project is striping a little line with a bicycle symbol that says, "Sit here," to make sure the thing sees you, as well as providing the loops that the?
Make it all happen.
Yeah, the loops Caltrans recommends to actually see a bicycle.
All right. I, I knew it had to work. I just couldn't envision it. So X marks the spot, in other words, or a bicycle marks the spot.
It helps to be in the right place, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions regarding this? Don't go away. And now moving to oral communication, is there anyone that would like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one running down except the chief. No, he's not running. He's still, we'll return it to council. Are there any other questions for Mr. Dearling on this subject? Seeing no lights lit, I will accept a motion. Whose turn is it? Come on, Bob. You haven't done any work today.
Okay. Okay. I recommend that the council adopt staff recommendations.
Okay. And a second, please.
I second that short motion.
And then, is there anyone else who has a question or a comment? Seeing?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Costa.
This is written down for, thank you, Mary Lynn. For some reason, I didn't ask. Was there any concern, I'm sorry, that there was only one bid?
We, well, we were interested in that, that that happened. Our, we aren't largely concerned because the bid received was very close to the engineer's estimate. And also, we understood that it was a little bit of an unusual project and that there's no paving to be done. And usually, striping and sign contractors aren't the prime contract, or aren't the prime contractor. They're often subcontractors. So, so it's less common for, for them to bid as a prime contractor. So we, we had a number of plan holders, and we were expecting more bids, but only received the one that we did.
And you believe it would have been too costly and possibly we would get the same result if we would have put it out to bid one more time?
Right, yeah. Staff doesn't expect savings if we put it out to bid again since the bid received, compared to Caltrans cost data and to our own cost data, comes up very close to the engineer's estimate.
Great. Thank you.
Does everybody use the same computer program?
Yeah, must be.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing no lights lit, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item number 11, the award of project. And Craig, you're carrying all the water tonight, aren't you? Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This project, number 10LB1, is, the purpose is to install a new heating and ventilation system at the Lompoc Public Library and to remove and abandon elements of the old heating and ventilation system being replaced. The replacement is necessary due to severe damage in the existing underground ducts, which has made the system no longer usable. The proposed units are to be placed on the library roof, routing the ductwork hung from the ceiling inside the library above the lights. If awarded now, the project should begin construction in October of 2011 and should finish in or by March of 2012. And this schedule assumes that the library will remain open to the public under its current typical schedule, which they open at noon, and I think it's noon to 7 some days and noon to 8 other days, except for a few potential limited closures for certain operations that the contractor needs a little more time to complete. For this project, a construction management consultant, Bikini Defferville Management, has been selected by staff and is proposed to perform onsite review and monitoring of the contractor's work during construction, thereby relieving city staff of this additional workload. And the funding for this project is entirely proposed to be from the Community Development Block Grant Program. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this project.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Are we going to do this before the carpet?
It is planned before the carpet, yes.
That's important to me, Craig.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. When do we approve, when do we allocate the funds for this?
I can defer to Brad Wilkie for a little more clarification on that.
Yeah, I guess, I don't recollect. Maybe it was before, or maybe I just don't remember. We just went through the approval for CDPG funding, and it was the carpets, right, for this coming year. So during what year, during what cycle did we approve this?
Brad Wilkie, the Finance Director, Management Service Director. The, this was kind of a in-between approval. The damage, the, what was found out, was found in January of 2010 when we had some abnormally large rainstorms that the library found out that this problem existed. Immediately after that, we were looking for some funding sources to be able to correct the issue. And CDPG came up as a primary source of funds. So what council at that point in time did, allowed CDPG to go to the consortium because the money is held at Santa Barbara County for the, for the purposes. And this was done, I think, after the CAFER, CAPER was done for that particular year. So we went back to them to ask for additional funds for this project in an amount of $540,000. Upon their approval of project is when we started the work on the design phase of, of the work that's being awarded tonight. So once that, once that grant award was okayed by that third party, we went forward with the design aspect of it.
So if I understand you correctly, this was not part of the regular CDPG pot of monies?
Not for that particular year, and it was not part of this particular year either.
Okay. So that's what I need clarification of, because, I mean, CDPG has a certain amount of money yearly, and we go through the whole process, and we look at all the projects that come up, and we have to deviate up. This is totally in, in addition to that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I need a clarification. Thank you.
Is there any more money in that pot?
Actually, no. The 540 was the allocations for two previous years. And that was coincidentally how we came up to the 540, was the available funds in those two prior fiscal years that had remaining monies. So it doesn't impact the current year allocations that you just recently worked on, so.
So is residual rollover money from, unspent rollover money assigned to us in prior years?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I, that brings up actually something interesting. So there was 540 sitting there, and we just found a way to use all of it. Because that seems really, really coincidental, that it would be the exact same amount that we happen to have allocated.
Well, keep in mind that some of this money had previously been allocated for other things. One thing that we allocated to and then de-allocated to was the community center once we found out we had more money coming in from the RDA proceeds from the bond. So those are separate things, but they were happening about the same timelines, so we were able to modify the amounts to leave as much money in the CDPG funds as possible for a rainy day. And this was that rainy day.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second question that I have quickly is, I noticed that the library Board of Trustees decided not to use $4,000 of reserve from the library fund as a construction contingency, and I praise them for that. I think that that was the right decision. But my one question is, have we gotten the okay from the contractor that they will be able to stay within that contingency amount? Is that a concern, that there is only a $26,000 contingency on a project of this size?
Well, as, as the staff report briefly states, we, we do like to have at least a 10% contingency. However, within the construction bid, there are two allowance sums that add to $20,000, which are stated to be for unforeseen conditions. Well, one is for unforeseen conditions, and another is called a contingency allowance, which act in a similar way to the contingency that's outside of the construction bid price. So adding that $20,000 to the $26,000 of contingency that we have shown here, we feel that the sum of those two should be enough to complete the project.
Thank you.
So as I listen to you envision this, you're going to mount several new units on the roof, you're going to provide a piercing through the roof for the ducting, and then you're going to have suspended ducting within the building. Am I, am I on track?
Right.
And because in those cases, it's basically a new installation in something, you can see virtually everything other than cutting the hole through the concrete roof, that is why you feel that the, the possible contingencies are quite limited?
There, there is less of this project that you can't see as compared to some other projects, like maybe the Aquatic Center dehumidification project where there was damage in concealed places. So, so yeah, it does make us more comfortable that the majority of the work is in places that we can see. There are still potential unknowns, things that could happen when cutting through the roof or other things. But we, we feel that with the allowance funds and the contingency we've budgeted, it, it should amount to enough to allow the contractor to complete the project.
And the original ducting that was under the floor is poured into the cement, or how was it installed? Or is there crawl space?
It, well, it looks like it was direct buried.
In the dirt.
In the dirt.
That's pretty different. Is that what they did, Larry? Here's you can tell.
I'm chuckling because I'm wondering who the building inspector was on that project. No, that wasn't the design. It was supposed to be encased in concrete. So if the pipes rusted away, you'd still have a pipe, essentially a concrete pipe. So it was a complete construction mistake or a construction cheat that just laid the pipe in the ground and covered it with concrete.
Ah, yes, I see. Well, we'll hope it was an honest mistake. Okay, let's, let's take a look, see if we have any public comment out there. Is anyone that wants to have public comment on the subject? Seeing no one rise, come on back. I have a question that, and I, and just so everyone knows, I called Larry earlier because it goes in a little bit wider direction. I wanted them to be able to prepare to talk about it. My concern is that we have a $294,000 contract and a $96,000 management contract, which is roughly 25% of the contract. By comparison, the pool dehumidifier, the management contract was approximately 10%. And with regard to the community center, the management contract was approximately 4% based on the numbers I pulled out. So, number one, I would like whoever wants to talk about the process by how we select a management contract and then explain to me why a fairly simple duck job is going to require a $100,000 bird dog.
First question on how we select the consultant. State and federal regulations require professional services like engineering and other things to be selected on qualifications-based procedures. So especially for federal funding, it's explicitly stated that cost can't be a factor in selecting, and it's supposed to be primarily based on qualifications. So in the city's request for proposals to perform the CM for this project, qualifications was the category with the highest number of points allocated to respondents. Understanding and approach was another category, and schedule availability and flexibility was a third category that the respondents were evaluated on in their proposals. The city ranked five proposals received and began negotiations with the first-ranked consultant, who was evaluated to be most qualified and overall had, had the most overall points of any of the respondents. With that consultant, the, so, so that's the selection procedures. Getting into the cost question, with that consultant, the city was concerned that the CM cost was a large percentage of the construction contract value and asked that consultant, essentially, can the CM cost be limited as much as possible? How much can it be limited in order to effectively cover the CM for this project? So the CM consultant responded that they could provide a scale of coverage, beginning with something on the order of two days a week of coverage for the first couple months, then three days a week for the third month, and then four days a week for the last two and a half months, in order to not over, overcharge the first few months and still adequately cover submittal review and other things that need to happen, and then save the majority of the budget for the active construction expected at the end of the project. I guess another point related to those other projects is looking at the, the factors that drive CM cost. One, one primary factor is the length of the project. So for this project, we have 170 calendar days in the construction contract, which is a relatively long period of time compared to the dollar value of the contract when, when this project is compared to the other recent projects the city has had, the dehumidification project and the senior center project. So comparing the, the CM dollars per calendar day, the CM dollars proposed for this project of $96,000, $96,600, I think it is, over 170 calendar days is something on the order of $568 per calendar day of construction. The dollars per calendar day, let's see here, for the senior center, worked out to be 750 CM dollars per calendar day. And for the aquatic center, worked out to be $1,029 per calendar day, just based on the initial calendar days of the contract, not counting extensions that are proposed and things. So for this contract, we're proposing 568, which is about 75% of the dollars per calendar day, calendar day that, that was proposed on the senior center, and a little more than half of what was proposed on the aquatic center. So looking at it that way, it's comparable. Looking at it as a percentage of the construction contract value, though, it, it concerned us as well.
Did the management firm that's managing our senior center offer a bid on this or not?
They did.
And because we don't receive the, the bid information, where were they in the big scheme of things on, on this?
They were, they were not in the top two to three in the overall ranking of proposals by the review team.
I'm confused by that. They were the top-ranked for the community center, but they're down the list of ways on this one. How can that be? And, and I'm not being critical. I just don't understand the process, so forgive me.
Right, yeah. I, I can't speak so much for the community center project, but for this project, we had specific criteria to evaluate the respondents on, the first being qualifications, which was, I believe, 50 points out of the 100 that were. which was, I believe, 50 points out of the 100 that were allocated. And so qualifications were tied to the staff proposed for the project, not necessarily just what the company has done in the past. We want to know, the staff that you're proposing to work for us, are they the ones that are qualified? So we evaluated the staff members proposed, based on their qualifications, and then evaluated the approach and the understanding of the work, and then the schedule availability and flexibility. And the way that the evaluation turned out, we had a few very qualified, and I guess I should say that all five were competent and qualified, but a few more cream of the crop respondents, and had a few following.
With regard to this process, was the fee they were going to charge part of their initial proposal or not?
It was in a sealed envelope because cost can't be a criteria in proposal evaluation on federally funded projects.
Were any of the other sealed envelopes ever opened after we determined who we were going to pick, so we could find out if we were paying a whole lot more?
Well, I believe, I believe the other costs were at least reviewed. We didn't feel that the first-ranked consultant's billing rates or anything else was out of line. We felt more that the higher cost was attributable, like I mentioned, to the length of the contract and trying to provide sufficient coverage at a time and materials basis, understanding that unspent time wouldn't be billed.
Okay, so I'm still on my fishing expedition, so.
Sure.
Looking back to Larry, were the dollar amounts proposed by the other management companies substantially different from the dollar amount of this management company? Anybody know?
It would be based on the hours proposed, and probably, well, potentially, I guess I should say, other proposers may have had fewer hours. I remember a few other proposers having more hours proposed, and it's likely that a few other proposers had fewer hours proposed as well. So hourly rates vary, so people are maybe from 100 to 150 an hour. So if you have a higher hourly rate and more hours, you're higher. Lower hourly rate and fewer hours, you're lower. So essentially, if you propose a lot fewer hours, you're going to be lower.
Would you classify the differences as dramatic or somewhat similar?
Well, the initial proposal from the selected consultant assumed full-time coverage, so that was dramatically different than what we're proposing here. The initial proposal, which is all we got from everybody else, I don't, I don't remember each one of them, but some of them proposed full-time.
So the initial proposal from all of them was different than the end result from this one that you negotiated with, based on the reduced number of days and hours? The other ones were bidding what the consultant had originally said, and then you looked at that and said, oh, no, wait, we need to do, we need to have some cost containment?
Need to reduce, yeah.
And you acted based on that?
I don't, I can't say that everyone absolutely assumed full-time coverage, but some did and some didn't. And I don't remember whether anyone was lower than what we have here.
I guess I'm not looking for, you know, pennies, but in a general sense, if there was similarity between the bids?
Yeah, they were, there was similarity between the bids. It just kind of depends on how they, how they approach it, and whether you think that the coverage that they propose will be adequate. If they propose a day a week for the whole five months, then probably not adequate, even though they might only be $20,000 or whatever. But it's kind of a balancing act between what you think is adequate coverage for the project and the cost.
Okay, just really briefly, could you smarten me up on what these people do for us?
Sure.
Other than tell you to write the check, it's okay?
Yeah. In general terms, they, well, I guess I should back up to say what we're proposing in this award is two days a month, essentially two days a month of coverage for the first two months, three days for the third month, and then four days for the final two and a half months.
Per week?
Per, sorry, yeah, per week.
Yeah, I knew where you were going.
Two days per week for those months, yeah. So that's, that's the average amount of coverage proposed. And what they do within that coverage, there's a long list of 16 to 18 tasks in our proposal, but generally, it is reviewing the submittals and distributing and passing them to the city and the design team for review and approval. It's watching the contractors' work and making sure it's in accordance with the contract documents. It's logging and reviewing the hours on site, making sure they're cleaning up and allowing the library to open to the public for use, interviewing. There's a lot of prevailing wage and legal things too, so they have to do employee interviews and make sure employees think they're getting paid as much as they're supposed to be getting paid by prevailing wages. They facilitate meetings and take notes and do all the file-keeping and organization and interface between the city and the contractor.
At the end of the day, are they basically our building inspector also, or are we, the building department going out there also?
No, the building department would go out there also. They act on behalf of the owner, that the owner's getting both what's best for the owner and what's, what they should be per the contract documents. So the building division would have a different role in making sure the building code is met.
Okay. This one's for Larry. Larry, I understand that, no, let me rephrase that. I have been told that some cities have a pre-qualified list of construction management folks, and that that is more advantageous for smaller local companies rather than the process that we use. Could you speak to that, please?
I'm not aware of other cities that do it that way. We've done it from job to job, depending on the complexity of the project. There, not many years ago, we, engineering managed every project our own, didn't hire a consultant, particularly when we're doing road projects, bike path projects, things like that. So when we come to heating and air conditioning, specialized project, a dehumidification project, we try to pick a consultant that's familiar with that kind of work. It's, this being federally funded, and there's a federal law that states you have to pick an architect or engineer based on qualifications. You can have this package of all these prices and open them up after you've picked the best qualified consultant that you feel knows the job that you're about to build the best. You can't go open those prices that they had up and go find the cheapest one and suddenly make that the top qualifier.
No, I understand that.
That's difficult to do, so.
I understand that, I'm just.
We would look at them to see if, are we getting a fair price that's in the ballpark, like you talked to Craig, and that's how we do it. Now, I'm, I know that there are, I've talked to Santa Maria in the past, they have had, like, on contract, a soils, concrete, inspection, testing firm, and we have the same, while that's not exactly a construction management firm, we do use that process.
And you're the expert now. Would you say that this is, being a reasonable and prudent man, this is a good decision?
To hire the construction manager for this project?
Yes.
Yes, we don't, we don't have anybody in our engineering staff that's an expert on air, heating and air conditioning.
No, I guess, no, I understand that. I guess I'm saying, are you satisfied with this proposal, and we've done our due diligence in life? I'm still struggling with the fact that we're going to pay a quarter of the money to have somebody watch us. That's the part that's difficult for me. You understand that from the private side?
Oh, we understand it, looking at it ourselves. We think it's way too much money, and we're trying to figure out why. But the difference between this and a $3 million project is we have a $300,000 project that takes 170 days. So we got $10,000, $20,000 a day, and we still got to pay this engineering firm $120 an hour to look over it.
So the principal cause here is the length of the project?
Right, the length of the project, yes.
And this project is so long in a general sense because?
We're trying to keep the library open. They're only working from early in the morning till noon.
Gotcha. So they're not working nights on it, in other words?
Right.
Okay.
Kevin has a comment.
Okay, Kevin.
Yeah, if I could add just one more item to that, that thought. We've done the best to guesstimate what the contractor will do in terms of staffing this, this project over the 170 days. And that's, as Craig mentioned, the, you know, Mary Jo is, I'm sorry, the CM has proposed this kind of stepped ladder approach in stepping up her time to meet the demand. When we actually award the contract, the contractor will tell us how he plans to staff the project, what the schedule will be. And if he may decide, you know what, time is money for me, I think I can get this done in 60 days, and I'm going to hit it really hard for 60 days and be done with it. Well, that means our costs, you know, we would go back to the CM and say, well, okay, how are we going to staff that? That could likely be a lot less. So again, this is a time and materials contract for the CM, not lump sum, so to the extent that she doesn't spend that extra time on there, it'll cost less.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and I have one other comment. You asked about, did the company that is managing the senior community center bid on this, well, the company that won it is the company that's managing the dehumidifier project. So it, we do have experience with them.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have a question on this, or did I ask everyone available? Councilmember?
Thank you, Marilyn. Actually, you did ask a lot of my questions, so thank you for the clarification. This is a learning process for me as well, so I appreciate that. And I know that you listed part of their duties, and I, I don't mean to say this tongue-in-cheek, but is part of it keeping the construction on schedule?
Well, monitoring whether the construction is or isn't on schedule, I guess, as, as you guys discussed a lot earlier in the meeting, to some extent, we can't keep the construction on schedule, but we can monitor it and talk to them about not being.
Neither can the construction management.
Yeah.
So they're just a monitoring body as far as the scheduling is concerned?
Monitoring, talking to the city, discussing with the city and the contractor what can be done to, to get back on schedule, but.
Right, so that concerns me a little bit, that they're on the dehumidification contract, and we're behind schedule on that, so let's just remind them that we like to be on schedule. But I was just curious, so I am a little concerned, but I understand now that, with the explanation why we're doing that. And I would like to note that I'm actually really happy that a local business is getting the contract. I think that that's really, really great that it happened to turn out that way. So I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, even Santa Maria is pretty close. Yeah, no, yeah, the local guy for the work. Okay, any other questions? No? Who would like to make a motion? Don't all rush in at once.
Make a short one.
Councilmember Lingle.
I move that we, the council accept the staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
You know, said the attorney, I think you should have to read all this, don't you? No, no one wants to make him, okay. I had that. No one wanted to talk about it. Okay, any other discussion from the council? And could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Written communications, have we any written communications? No. Oral communications, anybody else out there want to take a bite of the apple for two minutes? No. Council, redevelopment agency requests, comments, meeting reports, and Dirk, I'm reminding, okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Actually, I have two council requests. The first one is, I'd like to be relieved as the alternate on the air pollution control district, and have Marilyn take that position for me, due to the fact that it follows SB CAG, he's already there. I've been in a position where I wasn't able to attend one of the meetings when primary was gone. I wouldn't want that to happen again, so I'd like to be relieved as the alternate on the air pollution control district and have Marilyn assume that job.
We would need to agendize that for a future meeting.
Do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So we have a first, and now we need a second and a third.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll third. Okay. I'm sorry, who is next?
I had a second request. Next thing is, I'd like to have counsel for next meeting talk about a single purpose committee. I've done a little outline here, and I've brought copies, I hope, for everybody.
Dirk, can you make this available to the public as well?
I have a few copies. I didn't know how many people, so I brought, I wound up with three extra that I would be more than willing to share. I would probably be best to read this also. Basically, I've just titled it, "The Old Municipal Pool Single Purpose Committee", and "As a citizen and a council member, one of our biggest civic problems that cannot be ignored is right in front of us. A decision, plan, or a resolution on the use of the old municipal pool. Reviewing the recent single purpose committee's input on planning recommendations and the input council received, I feel it would benefit our citizens to establish another single purpose committee to evaluate the end use of the old municipal pool. A lot of people remember Floresta Park, D Street, the Foster Freeze, and the Schuyler House here. Our city government outgrew the Anderson Recreation Center, which was our city government, and our new city hall was built on a park at 100 Civic Plaza, the old D Street. This land was deeded to the city as recreational or community use. Taxpayers have owned these facilities for 55-plus years. I have many questions and many ideas about the old municipal pool, but I really feel it is up to our community to decide a direction for council to proceed. This is a committee that will have a very pivotal role in the use of an abandoned public facility. I solicit council's support of a single purpose committee to evaluate all aspects of use, upgrades, alternatives, and community input, to plan an end use for city hall's neighbor, the old municipal pool. I solicit council's input on committee membership, reporting, staff, representation, size, et cetera."
Okay, so what we would have here is your request to put this item on, it wouldn't be the next council meeting, because we would, we probably will have this emergency one for the single issue or two, so it would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. And what I'm, think I'm hearing you say is that you would like to have a general discussion of the issue to provide direction, more specific direction to staff. Am I getting that right?
Well, to really just follow in the lines of our planning single purpose committee, I, it's, it's a problem, it's something that needs to be done. It's obviously that as a council, we're not going to be able to sit up here and make the decision. I would really like to put citizen committee to do this project. It's their old pool.
Okay, what I'm saying, what I'm saying here is, so I just give the direct, correct instruction to staff, is that we want to have this agendized, and that then we will discuss it at some length and provide further direction to staff. So they're not expected to go get a report, we're going to talk about it, and then it'll come on.
Absolutely, whatever, whatever council decides if they want to move on with this, or what we would decide to do as a, you know, it's whatever.
Well, I would surely be in favor of it, so you can count me for the second. Now we need a third.
Mayor, that was just to put this on the agenda?
Correct.
For future discussion amongst council?
Correct.
I'll third that.
All right. And, now, I'm sorry, I still don't know which one of you two is next. I wasn't watching. All right. And now, I'm sorry, I still don't know which one of you two is next. I wasn't watching. Okay, the coin flip, and Councilmember Martner wins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the September 20th council meeting. I understand Councilmember Costa is gonna be on telephone. My question is to, Mayor, are you going to be here present? Or are you, you're going, okay, so, and the reason why I'm asking is that I'll be away on business that day, and I guess I would like to make the request whether I can be on the telephone.
We can have two on telephone, can't we? Yep. I think we can have all of us on telephone, and no?
No.
Three of us have to be here? Okay. So, you can't be, we can't leave you here sitting all alone, then? Okay, so, yeah, I mean, anybody object to that? No, absolutely, perfect.
Thank you.
I think you'll guys will probably have to share the skybox, though. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I'm glad that you brought that up. Thank you, Councilmember Martner. And I just wanted to quickly let the rest of the council know that I will be leaving the day before because my meetings begin at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, because I'm gonna be attending the policy committee meetings as I'm looking to get involved with the California Cities on behalf of the City of Palmok, whereas Marilyn and Ms. Barcelona's first meeting will be Wednesday at noon. So, me being there the day before allows me to attend those meetings at 9:00 a.m. The question I had was, do we have any video conferencing capability at this point? I have, I can bring my laptop, internet in the rooms, and I have a camera on my laptop.
Councilmember Costa, your laptop will actually distract you because there's a, like a seven-second delay.
I'm not, not that I'm watching, but that I will be on... Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This... Okay, is there any, we still have a little bit of time, so we can look into that because, and I understand that not watching the council meeting, but at least so I have a presence, and hopefully it's not too large on the screen, because I would have the ability to use the internet and use my laptop. And again, you know, it's just, it might make it easier that we have one person on the phone, one person on video. I know that's gonna get kind of complicated, but I would request that...
Councilmember Costa will have staff address it and see if we can accommodate that. I'll let you know.
I know, I know. Thank you. And then the other thing, I just wanted to, you caught it, I wasn't sure. We need to schedule that special meeting.
No, I think we should handle it as a special meeting, not an adjourned meeting. So, we'll do a 24-hour notice, post a 24-hour notice when we figure out what the best day is to do that.
Think we should do now?
Yeah, I'd prefer to do that now, so that the public has a little more lead time on it. Yeah, we'll get it at the end of the agenda. Okay, who's next? Reports, agenda items. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I have no requests. I just have an announcement. I wish I would have made this earlier when more people were viewing, but I can make it again. That's a meeting. September 24th, the, our local Veterans Memorial Building is celebrating their 75th anniversary. And there's going to be a weekend-long event out there, and I'd like to encourage everyone to take the opportunity, take some tours. There's going to be proclamations from the U.S. Congress, from the California State Senate, from our local city and county, congratulating the veterans on this building. There's been a lot of renovations on this building. If you haven't been in a while, take the opportunity to go see it. So, anyways, September 24th and 25th, you can mark it on your calendar, take some tours, go to the festivities. There will also be a dinner on September 24th. It's expected to sell out, so get your tickets early. They're $55 a person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for myself, I have a request. Pass right, and the rest go out if anybody wants to pick one up. This was prompted by two recent conversations, one with a loan officer who is working on the Laurel Crossing project. And it goes like this. I request that at the next council meeting, the council receive an update on the December 14th council workshop instruction to create an RDA Low Income Down Payment Assistance Program. I have fulfilled my commitment by supplying two agencies in one of the city's program for review. Additionally, I request an update on the replacement contractor for the Neo Consulting, Inc., Affordable Housing Rehab Program. Neo, Inc. withdrew their participation on February 2nd, 2011, and two other contractors expressed interest in taking on the contract. Additionally, I request information on two other housing set-aside allocations, one for the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority for the Santa Rita, Santa Rita Village project of $1 million, and one for the Cypress Court in the amount of $1.1 million. Both of these projects applied for tax credits in March and July, and I know they didn't get them in March, and I assume they didn't get them in July because no one said anything about it, but I'm not positive of that. The housing set-aside funds used for these projects were previously allocated and unspent by LHCDC and include the remaining ti, and the report include the remaining time before the excess funds must be transferred to the state. And I'm kind of hoping that if there's something in this stay that also stays those advancing deadlines, because these funds, if I recall correctly, had a limited amount of time. My intent is for a one-page summary of the ongoing process, dates of completion, and not an in-depth staff report. And I would be looking for a second, as I'll be the first.
I second.
Thank you. And a third.
I'll third.
Thank you.
May I just ask for some clarification?
Yes, sir.
The agency is not gonna be able to take any action on this.
Correct.
So, I'm not, so, so, you're not asking for that.
No, I'm just, this is a status report. Where are we in, where are we going, and how are we gonna get there?
So, you wanna, you want a written report of an update?
Short, yes.
And why do you want that on the, I'm just, I'm just curious, why do you want there to be a council item as opposed to a written report that you all get?
I would like to discuss it after we have the report, and the only way we can discuss it is if we do it this way.
The problem is, I'm not really sure what the nature of the discussion, and I'm not really sure what the nature of the discussion you're gonna have or could be because of the stay.
Yes, that would be part of the discussion also. Get it in front of us, and then we'll talk about it. It could be a very short conversation.
Just so you understand, you won't be able to do anything. You won't be able to give any direction as to what should be done with that money.
I understand that.
Okay.
I just want to know where we are and where we're going.
We'll be able to tell you where we are. We won't be able to say where we're going.
Well, we'll be able to say where we were going if the stay wasn't in place, and what the stay is likely to do to us.
Marilyn, I guess, to avoid the temptation in attempting to take action, a written report may be better in this case just because we are unable to take any action. Is there any, if you can, if you can justify why you want this?
No, I asked for a written report. I just want to be able to just talk about it, because one of the things we never get to do is talk about things because they're not on an agenda. And if we just, we get something in our mailbox, then we're at the same point where we can't talk about it. And we may get here, and we may not want to talk about it. I don't know. I don't know what the report's gonna say. That's the point.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but it seems that you do have a purpose. I'm a little confused. It bothered me all of a sudden that I think I have to withdraw my request, because it's not clear to me what the intent of this is to receive information. I think we should receive information, but given that the legal counsel is saying that we cannot take any action, there is really no purpose in discussing this if there is no action to be taken. So, I would like to receive the information as a written staff report, but I've been told that there is no action that can be taken. So, I'm kind of, while we're doing this, you must have a reason, but I don't know what the reason.
Well, and, and I don't understand it all either, and that's why I want to get a little deeper into it. But let's say, for an example, that the, the report said that the clock was running on these particular pieces of money, and we had nine months left, and the stay was in place, and it was likely to take 10 months. Does that mean that the money's gonna go away, or that that part of it has stayed also? Those are the things I want to understand, because it's now much more complex, and that's where I'm going.
I understand that, but you could receive that in a, in a written report and then return to staff and ask them your particular questions, because ultimately, whether it's gonna go away or not, we have no action to, we have no ability to change that.
Having been down this road with the city attorney in the past, it seems to be problematic.
Mayor and council, if I can, I think this is appropriate request for staff to put together a memo that I'll attach to my weekly update on Friday. And that'll give you, she did, Linda Wirtman, our RDA coordinator, did give a brief outline in her budget regarding monies that are put in place for this. But now with the stay, everything is on hold, and it's asking staff to do some work on an agenda that is premature at this time.
Okay, though.
So, due to that, I'll revoke my third as well.
Anybody else want to get in? Okay, nothing's gonna happen. Works for me. Okay, maybe. Okay, next, I have someone who has been doing research for me on a subject, and I'd like to bring that subject up over the council because I think it's worth looking into. And he has been kind enough to do very extensive research on chickens. I think I could go through all of the documents that have been given to me, but I would really like to just pass them on to staff and have them come back with a brief report. Suffice it to say that in every other surrounding community in the county, one can have chickens within certain restrictions. And he was also kind enough, and Chris is back there in the back row. Raise your hand, Chris. Thanks for the good work. Also nice enough to give us some language on a proposed ordinance. And so, what I would like to do is be able to pass this information to staff and have them come back to us at a future council meeting, probably two council meetings away because of the amount that would be involved in this, and give us a report on chickens and the possibility of allowing them within the City of Palmok. And I think you were up first, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Maybe the report covers it, but do chickens eat gophers, or do gophers eat chickens?
I don't know if they eat gophers.
They're incompatible.
But they are really, they are really good at snails and pill bugs. That I can tell you. We'll never have a snail in your yard with a chicken.
And did you know that they give out eggs?
There's a downstream positive product that you don't get from a gopher. Gopher, you get a hole, and chicken, you get fertilizer. Yes. So, we're back looking for a second and a third for this.
I will happily support and second that.
Okay, and a third.
Who can say no to chickens?
Okay. And that's it, other than I need to report that I, let's see, I spent 10 days and did 55 miles in the Sierras. It was wonderful. The standard joke is, what did one mosquito say to the other? Let's go to McBoy Scout for dinner. They were friendly. I participated on behalf of the city prior to leaving in an RDA press conference in Golita where we discussed extortion, right? Yes, extortion. And I think the assembled mayor spoke quite forcefully, and I understand we made the evening news in various places. Also, at city expense, I traveled to the League of Cities Dinner in Solvang, which was prior to last council meeting, but I wasn't here. I was invited to join our controller, John Chang, on a reservation tour, and we're now on a first-name basis for whatever value that might be to us. Probably the nicest thing I did was I attended John Silva, alias Mr. May Taggs', 100th birthday. And John was very appreciative of what this council is doing, and I think you could say he was more than enthusiastic about us. I've had several meetings with the ad hoc group for the Space Museum and Science Center, and I also attended the U.S. Air Force Commander's Community Leaders Dinner and the Community Canvas dedication. I wanted to report to the chief that at the police Special Olympics cruise, I ran 11 red lights, and I played my stereo far in excess of what was allowed. I did confess to Officer Andreessen. However, he advised me, he could not write me a ticket because he had run 12 red lights. So, everybody had a lot of fun with that. And then, the city administrator and I went to the grand opening of the new Laurel Crossing townhomes. With a little help, they had been able to get KCOY to do home tours there, and I think they got a big spread on TV. Their opening was the next day, and they had a stack of people. I stopped by in the middle of the day, and they had four people who had been there for all day and were negotiating. And I attended 20 other, 21 other meetings and events. Anybody else got a report? Okay. And then, the last item would be to establish a date and time for the special meeting. And Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that maybe we let the staff understand how long it's gonna take them to get that report done, and then call and say, when can we set a date? Otherwise, we may be setting a date that he may not be able to get the list done by.
When's, when's it have to be done?
It has to be done by the 28th, and so that means the 24th or 25th, 25th or 26th of August are the last two weekdays before the 28th, which happens to be a Sunday. So...
We could agendacize it at the youth soccer opening at Saturday night.
I think I would rather set a time now while we're live on camera, and the public can know when the meeting is, because we, we've heard people talk about that.
The 25th, the 26th?
He's looking at you, Brad.
We've just started preparing that report, assuming all the way along that we wouldn't have to do it because of the way we did the ordinance. So, we're just starting now. I don't want to say that we'll have it done in a week, but the later we can have the meeting, the better. I would say Thursday afternoon or Friday sometime.
Friday tends to be a little more difficult. How about Thursday afternoon, which would be the 25th?
On the 25th.
Okay, and as I kind of doubt this is gonna draw a large crowd, what would be the earliest convenient time for people to show up? Left to right?
I would say 3:00 p.m., 2:00 p.m.
Councilmember Costa?
Marilyn, if, it's okay with council, I would like to give them as much time as possible and move to Friday. I mean, I really genuinely, this is, you know, as much time as they need. I suppose we could do it earlier, but I just, I'm concerned. I mean, Brad, you really, you think Thursday would be okay?
We have a good start on it. I just want to make sure that we can make sure that we have every single possible obligation on that schedule, because it will be very critical to the operation of the depart, of the RDA if certain things happen with the stay and with how things end up in January. So, it'll be, how we do it is gonna be very important, because it will dictate what we can spend money on and what we can't, cannot spend money on. So, Friday would be great, but I understand scheduling is scheduling. So, Thursday afternoon, I hope not to have, I hope to have it done by the first part of the week, but I just can't guarantee that.
So, then my request would be, at least if we're gonna do Thursday, let's bump it to the evening, so at least they have the whole working day on Thursday.
Okay, how about 5:00 o'clock on the 25th?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be at an NCPA meeting on that day, so I will not be able to attend, but we don't need all five of us here anyway.
We just made sure we have that three. That's all.
Okay, yeah, that's fine for me, so...
Just out of, for a comment, I'll be returning on Friday. I will be here on Friday for that meeting. But we don't, we, as long as we have three, we're fine.
Okay, you're welcome to join us by teleconference from the road.
Yeah, I'll be driving home. I may just do that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Barcelona, are, will this be the only item on the agenda?
Well, I could pick up hitchhikers.
Councilmember Costa, there'll be... Councilmember Costa, there will be one other item. Been requested to place an appointment for Dirk Starbuck, for Councilmember Starbuck, to appoint his nominee to the Planning Commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Speaking of appointments, there's been an appointment for my Public Safety Commissioner that has been sitting there for a while, and I don't know why it hasn't made it to the agenda. Public Safety Commissioner? There's been an application for over 10 days, over 10 business days. Yes, there is an opening, my opening, and it's been over 10 business days that the person that would like to be in the commission has filed an application. Anyway, we can take it offline, but you remind me. I would like to put it on the special meeting agenda as Councilmember Starbuck is going to make the recommendation. I would like to do that one there, too.
I'll set that one on, too. So that will... We'll have both of them on for that agenda.
We'll have to make sure the special meeting is a joint meeting, then, of the agency and the council, which is no problem, but just make sure that that's what it is, because the agency has to adopt the enforceable obligations. The council's going to be making the appointments.
Okay, and do you need to come for that?
If it's on Thursday, I'll actually be here anyway.
Perfect. All good things. Okay, anything else?
Mayor and council, I just want to advise that I will not be attending this meeting as I will be on vacation.
Do you want a teleconference?
Management Services Director Brad Wilkie will be acting city administrator and will be sitting in this capacity.
And the chief will be backing him up with a gun. Knows they're sitting together a lot now. So our meeting will be on the 25th, which is a Thursday, at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. It will be a joint set... Joint meeting of the council and the agency board for the purpose of adopting the document necessary for the court proceeding and the appointment of two appointments to various city boards.
And, Mr. Mayor, since you now have the date, I would suggest doing adjourned meeting. They don't have to worry about a special meeting notice.
I hereby change what I was going to say, and unless there's someone else, something else, we will be adjourned to the Palmok City Council Redevelopment Agency special meeting. No, it'll be a regular meeting? Adjourned regular meeting at 5:00 p.m. on August 25th in the council chambers. Thank you for coming.